Good evening, special city council meeting for Tuesday, October 12th. Uh, the county of San Dimas.
Okay, good evening, a special city council meeting for Tuesday, October 12th, uh, 5:30 PM. Pursuant to the July 17th order from the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health, face masks must be worn by all persons regardless of vaccination status while in the city council chambers. There will be a designated area in the lobby to accommodate members of the public who do not wish to be seated in the council chambers and desire to remain socially distanced regardless of vaccination status. Temporary accommodations due to COVID as a standing accommodation to ensure participation of those with sensitive and other risk conditions, the city will offer a nearby alternative location where individuals will who desire to participate in the council meeting and would desire to wear masks, maintain six feet of social distancing and ensure that those around them are will be allowed to remain in the area only if they comply with these requirements. To participate in oral communications, such individuals will be called, can proceed to public speaking podium and address the city council and are able to return fully masked area socially distanced location with minimal exposure to an unmasked. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion or any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns will be referred to a staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
I, there are, there were no speaker cards turned in, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any other communications concerning this, this meeting?
No, there were no emails received for these, this item.
With that, we'll proceed on to the study session. A report on the formation of a community advisory committee for public input into the development of the downtown specific plan, DTSP. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Henry Ngo, our community development director.
Real quick, Jeff, just so, uh, just so I can make sure I ask, I'm not conflicted in this in any which way.
Uh, not on this first part, and then even on the second part where we're going to be talking about the boundary of the downtown specific plan, um, we, staff is gonna follow the discussion as it goes along, and if we ever start talking about any property that's within, within 500 feet of yours or John's, um, then we will stop the discussion at that point and you'll have to leave the room.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and public. Henry Ngo, Director of Community Development. Uh, the item before the council is a very exciting item, um, for the city of San Dimas because the downtown specific plan will be the guiding document, uh, for the downtown's potential growth and reimagination. With the construction of the future Gold Line Station and with the continued state legislation pressure to develop housing, especially around transit stations, um, it's vital that the city maintain as much local control as possible, and the downtown specific plan will be the foundation of this effort. As part of the downtown specific plan process, public engagement and outreach is vital to make sure that the document reflects not only the city council's vision and goals for its downtown, but also the residents, business community, and other pertinent stakeholders. Tonight is our downtown specific plan kickoff, and our consultant, Inner West, will provide an overview of the downtown specific plan process, a tentative schedule, project objectives, and discuss other key components of the plan. With that, I'd like to introduce Nick Pragakis, uh, the project manager for Inner West. Additionally, our associate planner, Anne Nguyen, is also here, and together they'll be able to answer any questions that the council may have. With that, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Pragakis.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Again, my name is Nick Pragakis with Inner West Consulting Group, and this evening I will be giving an overview of the downtown specific plan project. Very excited to be involved with this effort over the next 18 months. Um, I live fairly locally, about, uh, 15 minutes away, so I do frequent the area quite often and come and shop in San Dimas, so pretty excited to be able to be a part of this project and this planning process. So I'll give you an overview of tonight's presentation. Uh, I'll be speaking about the downtown specific plant project, um, the goals, the objectives, and what we're gonna be doing over the next period, year and a half, uh, give an overview of the community outreach process over that time, uh, talk a little bit about our community advisory committee and the other, uh, technical advisory committees that will be formed to help guide the project, as well as the downtown specific plan area boundary. Uh, the Inner West team, uh, I'll just say a few, uh, uh, things about Inner West. We're a multi-disciplinary engineering and planning firm with about 500 employees based in California, and, um, I have over 20 years of experience in downtown revitalization, uh, transaurian development planning, uh, land use planning and zoning, uh, code writing, and I've led some significant specific plan and transit oriented development projects here in California, as well as in the southeast, and, uh, recently worked on the City of Hope specific plan here in Doorty, uh, locally. Uh, we're joined by, uh, Calson RTKL, an architecture and urban design firm, as well as IBI Group, who will be doing the infrastructure and mobility analyses for the project. We'll also have Meridian Consulting, who will be doing the environmental planning and sequo documentation for the plan, as well as Cosmont Companies, who, uh, has a large resume of economic development, real estate, uh, experience, particularly in downtown planning and revitalization. We'll be setting the vision and guiding principles for downtown over the next decade with this plan, so this is a very visionary effort, as well as, um, having policies and development regulations that will be a part of it. But we will be transforming San Dimas Main Street as the light rail station comes in to create opportunities for new businesses and activities along Benita Avenue and the specific plan area. With a new specific plan, the city will be able to regulate in more detail the type and scale of development to occur than what's in the general plan, and it'll be a great opportunity for the city to establish a planning framework before the light rail service begins in a few years. The city has a unique identity and image to build upon, and maintaining the city's history and architecture and character will be important. The specific plan will also help facilitate the area to become a vibrant pedestrian-friendly area around the new transit station. For the project objectives, uh, we're gonna be leveraging the new transit station and existing downtown location, uh, to allow for a mix of uses and activities. Uh, we'll be looking at several opportunity sites within walking distance of the transit station to allow for significant potential, that allow significant potential for infill and redevelopment of existing underutilized properties and buildings. Uh, another objective of the plan is to promote aging in place and resources for seniors, so including housing and other, um, amenities. Also looking at ensuring streets are safe and user-friendly for all modes of travel, whether you're on a bicycle or walking or in a car. So safe whether you're eight years old or 80 years old, you can get around, uh, the downtown area, uh, safely. We'll also be looking at providing adequate and efficient parking in the downtown specific plan area, so as new uses and activities come in, we'll just encourage to have, uh, sufficient parking and strategies for doing that, as well as streamlining the development process through the specific plan and ER for new development that will occur. We just kicked off the project, uh, early September, so now we're looking at reviewing, uh, existing conditions, uh, looking at background reports, looking at your existing, uh, conditions today, and that will continue through the end of this year, and we will be forming an advisory committee and having those meetings, uh, here in a few months, and early next year we'll be doing some kickoff, a kickoff meeting with a project, uh, with a community workshop, uh, slated for early January, and then really get into the plan development starting early next year with the downtown vision, uh, creating, uh, the plan and concept plan alternatives, and through next year, and looking for adoption in early 2023, likely spring 2023 is when we'll have the plan prepared through the community meetings, uh, and the outreach to have a final plan and adoption. So we have four key components of the plan that we're looking at as we go through the process. That's looking at the land uses and scale of new development, so making sure the land uses that, uh, come in over time will be in the right location and at the right scale. Uh, that'll be really critical for, um, creating a great downtown area and specific plan area. Looking at economics, identifying opportunity sites and projects to help transform, uh, some key parcels and key areas of the specific plan area. Also looking at establishing a sense of identity, uh, through placemaking and urban design, and also looking at an inclusive public process throughout the project, so we create an outreach process that really reaches out to many members of the community and get as much involvement as we can throughout the process. So in terms of uses and scale of new development, we'll be looking at uses such as new retail, uh, restaurants, housing, perhaps entertainment and cultural activities, uh, scale, massing, and types of buildings, uh, it'll be critical that they fit into San Dimas and the character and the scale that's here today, and also integrating buildings with public spaces, whether it's common space or public space. Terms of economics, uh, and market analysis will be prepared, and looking at the city's overall socioeconomic characteristics, as well as existing real estate market demands and future market conditions in the specific plan area, as well as looking at what's happening in the San Gabriel Valley region as a whole. We'll look at how the private sector can also assist in making the plan a reality, so it's market-supported. Uh, we'll have an implementation and phasing plan as well as part of the project, so looking at how we can phase, uh, new activities and new uses over time in the short term, medium term, and long-term timeframe. We'll also plan to allow flexibility in the plan, uh, for downturns perhaps that may happen in the economy or other factors. For placemaking, we'll be establishing a sense of identity in the downtown specific plan area with these, uh, points in mind, so in terms of a human scaled environment, just make sure buildings are at a scale that make people feel comfortable walking around and being in, uh, addressing pedestrian safety, so oriented for safe walking, um, also looking at activities that can support the viability of the downtown area, so other things that can happen like farmers markets and other activities, uh, that are not in buildings. Also looking at the appearance and maintenance of, of buildings in the streetscapes, so how that, those can be, uh, planned for and designed in a good way. Also looking at building architecture and design of spaces will be, uh, pretty critical to create and develop an identity for the downtown area. Authenticity is also critical for making an authentic place that makes people, um, feel and know that they're in San Dimas, and that can happen through public art and murals and other types of things to help make it a unique place. For the inclusive public process, we will definitely be, outreach, uh, will be a key critical factor of this, including a shared vision with the community, having, uh, five community workshops over the, uh, process, and also having an online platform, which I'll talk about in just a moment. The community outreach process will be broad-reaching and transparent, and incorporate multiple channels for participation and foster an ongoing dialogue with citizens, engage the community in a way that is convenient and effective for them, um, also capitalize on existing events and communication channels with which the city and the community are already familiar with and comfortable using. We'll also maintain an effective process so that community participation does not delay the specific plan process. We'll be having, uh, four meetings with a community advisory committee, and that, they will serve as a sounding board and provide input during the key stages during the project, and that'll be a committee of roughly 10 to 12 people to serve on it, and we'll, we'll be working with, uh, developing that list and getting invites to the community members that will be participating in that over time, and that will include, um, key citizens, perhaps, um, local designers or, um, other people that can help guide the process and make it, uh, a successful product. We'll be, uh, developing a virtual top town hall website using, again, a company called MindMixer, they develop websites for, uh, downtown planning projects and other types of planning projects. It's, uh, been used across the country, I think in over like 200 to 300, uh, urban planning projects, so it's been very successful engaging people through the planning process. Um, it helps to have this website up that people can provide comments and input during the process in between public meetings, so people can come to public meetings and give their input, and, uh, we'll be surveying people and giving people questions, but this can also happen through this website throughout the, the process, and provide input at their convenience, not just during public meetings. It will survey the community on different topics throughout the downtown specific plan process, and, uh, code of conduct is also enforced, so, uh, that we just make sure the input is meaningful and helpful throughout the process. So what I'm showing here over the next few slides is just, um, a flavor of what the website will look like. Um, it's still in draft form, we're still putting it together, um, but it just will give an overview page that has, um, this is a, a screenshot of the landing page for the site, and it'll be linked from other social media sites, so you can get to it pretty easily and sign up. Um, doesn't take very long to do that. We'll have a, a section of the website that has information about the project, uh, frequently asked questions, so if people, uh, want to learn more about the project, they can go on this site, um, and look at information that we can have on there. We can have attachments for meetings and other things, fact sheets and other information. This slide is showing, uh, community survey that we can create and have on the website, um, and survey questions on various topic areas can be asked throughout the process. So this is just showing a question we put up here, uh, what types of businesses and activities would you like to see more of in downtown San Dimas? And people can check off, uh, what they'd like to see, and we have options like restaurants, um, and different things, a little bit hard to read, but, um, and personal services and other activities. We also have, uh, a mapping tool on here that people can, uh, zoom in to the project study area, they can, um, put comments and pin comments on specific locations on the map, so if there's an intersection perhaps that people feel maybe unsafe and they want to see a crosswalk or have some type of improvement, they can actually put their comments in, tie them to the map, and then provide a photo as well and load that up onto it. So it's a really interesting and helpful tool for this process. So the downtown specific plan boundaries is the last, uh, topic that I'll be discussing, and this proposed study area that I'm gonna show here in red is the new downtown specific plan area boundary, and this is a proposed boundary by city staff and the consultant team after reviewing, uh, the study area and the information so far. And this study area allows for infill commercial, multifamily, and mixed-use development, uh, that will preserve, that can allow for redevelopment and for infill development, but also to help preserve existing single-family neighborhoods. So, starts here on the eastern boundary, just, uh, east of Walnut, and it goes up here, catch it, we hear, we hear, City Hall goes along first, and then it just goes all the way to the 57 freeway, then down to Arrow, uh, going up, um, to near where the rail line is, and then catches this industrial development and, and development here, and this is where the new transit station will be, uh, located. This also includes, uh, areas identified in the housing element draft that looked at potential housing sites, so this study area boundary does include, uh, those, I think, believe 15 or 16 properties that you were looking at as potential sites for, for housing over time. So I'd like to now just, if, ask if there's any questions regarding the study area boundary? Any thoughts?
If I may beforehand, um, one of the other aspects of the presentation that I've asked staff, Henry and I've discussed this, is that we have regular checkpoints with the council throughout the process. If I may beforehand, one of the other aspects of the presentation that I've asked staff, Henry and I have discussed this, is that we have regular checkpoints with the council throughout the process. And so today you're hearing the introduction of this very important planning process. But along the way, when we have key milestones, the council will be receiving updates. So along the way, if there's any course corrections, we know that in advance before we get to a final product. And then we say we want holistic changes to it.
Can I ask you a question? Going east, what's the boundary? What street is it on the far east for the map? Yes, what is that street there?
Andrew, it's on the tip of my tongue. It's.
Walnut?
No. Go ahead.
So this isn't, this isn't actually a street, but this is a US forestry property. Adjacent to it is the single family residence. Walnut is north, south here, Arrow Highway, City Yard, Grove Station, and then it goes west.
Where's Walnut again? Could you point out Walnut again?
Walnut's right.
Right there. So you're going further than Walnut.
A little further than Walnut, correct.
Is that San Dimas Canyon?
Not quite. So we wanted to include the kind of the government civic center area as well.
Councilmember, it's South Gaffney is the street with the residential streets and we are just to the west of those homes.
Is what street?
Gaffney.
Gaffney.
So at this time you're wanting questions, I think there's a little feedback problem. You want to question, I'm sorry. Thanks, thanks, Deborah. You want to question just about the boundaries and not about the rest of the presentation?
For now, just, just to see if council concurs with the, with the boundary.
So on the boundaries, and I don't know if we went a little too far down on that. I'll just do a test, test. That's, that's not bad. So on the boundaries of the downtown specific plan, I noticed that this is not exactly, but it's reminiscent of the current creative zone. Creative growth zone, specific plan one. And that specific plan entails more than the downtown. So for example, west of Euclid, which I would consider a natural dividing point between small downtownish stuff and shopping centers. So there's shopping centers and some couple hotels that direct on that side between 57 and Euclid. With that in mind, are there going to be different areas? Okay.
I believe so.
Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I think when we go through this process, some of those items might be identified in different areas. So more adjacent to the freeway might be more of an intense type of mixed use, more of a regional possibly. Because it's, it's adjacent to a freeway and a larger collector street, Arrow. And then as you go east, more east, you go into more of the historic downtown area. And then we can potentially expand that area through this process and look at different areas. Yes.
All right. Thanks for that, Henry. And similarly, there's a couple of properties in specific plan 23, the triangular pieces that I forget if they're A and B or area A or whatever they are. But the two westmost ones that are on the north side of the gold line tracks. So the gold line tracks in that area seem to be a natural dividing line, at least for those two properties on the west out of the three. The gold line track seem to be a natural dividing line between downtownish type of stuff. Granted, those may end up being housing, but I'm not sure why they would be included in the downtown specific plan. Just a comment on that boundary. Something to think about. And then the last comment is east of Walnut. So there's the fire station, the sheriff's station, you know, forestry. So I understand that, you know, we possibly will use or well zone the forestry land for housing. But on the other hand, should that really be part of the downtown? So I'm just, that's, that's one thing that I would actually remove from the study simply because it's like a kind of a different animal. I mean, we can still talk about it as a, as a unit in some other context, but for the downtown specific plan, it may not need to be there. That's my, my thought on that.
So are you talking west or east of Walnut?
East of Walnut where the sheriff's station, the fire station, post office. And then beyond that, you get into, and I, you know, the post office is great to include as part of downtown. Circle K you have as part of the downtown. So this isn't hard. I'm just throwing that out there for food for thought that I'm just trying to think of the term downtown specific plan. And again, maybe that's just a different planning area of the downtown specific plan.
Correct.
Those are the only thoughts I have on the boundaries.
If I may ask a question, Henry. And Henry, in terms of the life of the downtown specific plan, what's the scope? Like how far out will we reasonably project for trying to plan? And then secondly, knowing that some of these properties, like the federally owned property, we can't direct any changes today while it's held by the federal government. How would integrating this here and changing the zoning on it impact, should the federal government release that property to a private interest or somewhere else?
If it's part of the downtown specific, if we were to include it, then it would be part of our zoning process or zoning area, basically. So if a potential developer were to engage with the federal government and they were able to potentially purchase it from them. They'll understand what our regulations, our vision is for this particular area. Otherwise it's zoned for public, semi-public, I believe. And we'd have to go through the rezoning and the land use process at that point. Oh, length, I mean, this is a vision of 20, 30 years plus even longer. So with our general plan that was done in 91, there are certain goals with regards to revitalizing the downtown. In the, with the specific plan and providing a nightlife and such. So this is the actual guiding document that will be the foundation for all those development standards and uses in the vision.
I guess I'm looking at the point that John raises and I just happened to have had leased office from the Fermica building. Which is just to the west of Gaffney. And I think you've included that. And I think the late Bob Myers house is there as well on the south side of the street. So I'm not, is your idea, if you were to keep that boundary, to be able to include those properties as well as the, I think there's a church. Was it Pony Express?
Yeah, I believe so.
On the north or southeast, southeast corner?
There's some commercial service uses along there. Correct.
So is your idea to be able to keep those properties that trail as well as the potential use of the federal property?
I think it's just mainly to analyze and study this potential area. We're not set in stone to say this is the actual boundaries. That's why we wanted to get input from the council from the beginning. But just because it's included in here doesn't mean that it will be included in the actual downtown specific plan, the final document.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping it, but I, but I do have the same questions John does to a certain degree that, you know, I'm okay with the purpose for analysis. But I do like the idea of having opportunity of expansion for growth. But also you're abutting to a residential neighborhood on the east side. So I mean, admittedly, there are some concerns I would have about that. But I also understand keeping the government complex together and the opportunities that that provides and housing potentially too, that could interface with all of this. So mixed use perhaps or otherwise, so.
Well, it kind of, that property fits in in a way with the apartments across the street, across Benita. So, and I, and of course, we're not, I see that the line is on Benita there, so we're not including those apartments. On the other hand, if you're going to include the forestry land, you should include the apartments across the street. Including things within the boundaries, I, I think is, is, this is an assumption I'm making, doesn't mean that every single thing within the boundary changes. Right?
Correct.
But it's good to know how they interact with one another. So if you're going to have apartments on the north side that already exist, and now we're thinking of doing housing, apartments or whatever on the forestry land. Then a point to be made actually for including it and in the analysis and everything else is that, oh, it's apartments, these are more apartments. And you know, that's what we're doing in this area. We're doing apartments. So, so I would almost say you got the boundary that circle K, which is kind of the extension of First Street, the north part. Just keep on going till you get to that boundary that you got on the east or stop at Walnut, one or the other, I would say. Cause we can always do this area as a separate thing. It doesn't, even concurrently, it doesn't have to be part of the downtown specific plan.
Correct.
So I can go either way on that.
Take the circle K out of the.
No, no, no. I was saying, see that circle K is included right there. You see Walnut coming down and then I would say just keep that, two choices. Either jog back to Walnut and exclude the sheriff's department and everybody else and everything east. That's one thing, just take it out. Or if we're going to have that part east of Walnut and south of Benita, include the part on the other side of the street that are apartments. There's some condos there, you know, the condos on Pony Express or across from Pony Express. And then there's some apartments. I'm just thinking that if we're doing an analysis of what is the downtown? And this part of downtown is housing leading into civic center and, you know, shopping center, more downtownish type of stuff. Then include that as well, just in the analysis to kind of point out that, oh, are, as you go down Benita to the, you're going westward, I've got housing. I've got housing, I've got housing. Now I'm entering the government complex. Now I'm entering, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I, I understand why we got that boundary. It's because staff was looking at things that might change. But I think for analysis purposes, include the north side or don't include it at all and just include that and have that be a separate thing. It's no big deal. I can go either way, but I just.
Yeah. If, if we weren't going to include the south, so the post office, the fire station, the police station. Would we not be including City Hall and the library at that point?
Good point.
So.
I'm not, I'm looking at the map and I see the apartments, but I mean, there's also a place of worship here. And I think there's also a convalescent or a skilled nursing facility there as well. I don't know that, I don't know that, I mean, I don't see that changing. I mean, for the purposes of the exercise, I just don't think it's foreseeable that in the life of this plan. That those facilities would, would come up for opportunity for change.
So are you saying that everything within the boundaries is up for change?
Well, that's a good point.
Because that's not the case.
Right, yeah.
That's my assumption. I mean, I hope it's not like.
Right.
We're not throwing out the whole downtown to recreate a new one.
A good point. I mean, you could theoretically draw your line at Pony Express and include the sheriff's station, the fire station and all of that. And then exclude everything to the east, which would carve out, that would give you those complexes, the government complexes. But.
If, if I may, and John raises a good point, just because you're in doesn't mean we're going to be changing. And so the north side, the condos just next to circle K, the apartment complexes, which I lived in when I first got here, the convalescent home and the church. You may be looking at that for circulation issues, the street, things that are not necessarily the homes. But you also want to be looking at, we don't know if the convalescent home, the church, the housing, the apartment complexes at some point, 10, 20, 30, 40 years. May be considered for something else. A rezone doesn't necessarily mean you change the existing use. You can still exist. It's if I take my rental apartment complexes and decide to sell it off to somebody else. Does the council want to have that area within the vision of somewhere long term to be considered? That if it changes the use at any point in time, we know what we want it to be in the long run, you would then want to include it. The federal property, the benefit of including it is when we do the environmental for the entire area and we're done with the environmental, we're done. We don't have to later look at that federal property. It now goes private or gets sold. And now we got to go through the full exercise of environmental and analysis to determine if we want to do something differently. So it's just your pleasure as to, do you want to long-term plan it and realizing that you may not change it? Or if it changes, it's going to be decades before it changes. That's just your question.
Yeah, no, I mean, you can Google right now. I mean, I participated in the last shred exercise. I pulled up one of the last plans. The council here has participated in, in the past. You can Google it pretty simply. I mean, if this was just an academic exercise, then I would absolutely agree and say, take it from circle K all the way to the east boundary and just draw that line straight up. Because for the purposes of continuity of both the north and south side of the street. That you could potentially look at that and make that have synergy, you know, and what you could envision. If people and use and utility wasn't a factor, you know, but I think that, you know, it's, yeah, well. If it's just an exercise, then you know, that's where I would be at.
The other piece is when we do game plan out decades and determine that a more intense use would occur. All the utilities that would potentially be looking at and planning out infrastructure improvements would be looking at our plans. In terms of what level of capacity they put underground. And there, because a limited capacity underground would then impact the development ability of any of those areas. So we, if we know what we want to do and we can plan it out reasonably, whether it happens or not is irrelevant. But all the other pieces would fall into place to allow that to occur if we so choose.
Yeah, I guess my, my hangup with this is, is that right now we're talking about the east side of town. But, you know, if we went and looked at the boundary of SP 23 and made that like more linear. So like right here, the big dip, the big cinch in the middle. If you bump that up one block just for the purposes of an exercise, then you would potentially look at other uses that would impact a neighborhood. And I guess, so I'm, yeah, down, down, right?
One more step.
There you go, right there. If you drew that line straight across, then you could look at, you know, other uses, you know, higher utilization. But again, I don't know that that's fitting, you know, taking the neighborhood into consideration, which is the same hangup, you know, for the purposes of an exercise or long term. I don't know that looking at Benita on the north side of the street on the east side of town there, that that is fitting. You know, do we, do we need that? And is downtown that far east? I mean, do we associate downtown with being that far east? Which I guess kind of goes back to John's point that, I mean, I don't consider downtown beyond Walnut, to be honest with you. I mean, I kind of think even civic center is a stretch, to be frank. So I really think downtown, you know, just having grown up here in town, I think most people think downtown is somewhere between San Dimas Avenue and Cataract. And everything else, you know, is what we aspire for it to be.
Correct. And that's current conditions today. And then this exercise is to look at the vision of what it could be if.
Right. And so to that point though, with throughput and with infrastructure, the 57 and Arrow exit, I think makes sense. I think the west portion of this makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, moving from Walnut West, I think makes a lot of sense. And you know, if you want to include Pony Express and the government complex, I think that makes sense, but.
Henry, I agree with what Ryan says, but I don't think it hurts to go on a little beyond those boundaries that you talked about. When actually if, if some like residential areas were included, nothing has to happen there, even though they may be within the boundary line.
Right.
For some people consider downtown going all the way to San Dimas Canyon and that little shopping center we have there. But you're right, the action is between San Dimas Avenue and Cataract. That's where the action is now. Hopefully we'll have action all over.
A lot of action.
That's what we're hoping for.
At, at least west of Cataract.
Right.
So, so am I hearing that there's a change, that what's shown right now is okay? Or is there a desire to expand some segment?
I think Emmett, Dennis and Eric probably need to weigh in on that. I would say one or two choices. So I, I think the boundaries should be a little different than they are right now on that east side. Either draw a line at Pony Express Court and exclude eastward. I think that's what Ryan was saying. Excluding east of Pony Express Court. So that way you include the civic. Excluding east of Pony Express Court, so that way you include the Civic Center complex and the other agencies, Fire Department, et cetera. All those agencies are part of downtown because they're those kind of uses. Or the other idea is to keep the lines exactly as they are, except the northern side of Benita there, and just draw that line upward. Now, I'd be open to extending it farther to San Dimas Canyon, but for this purpose, I'm just saying that little, that it would be a rectangle east of Circle K and just over, for purposes of analysis, as Chris said, for purposes of future infrastructure, even for buildings that are just on the south side, we're going to need infrastructure in there. And based on the presumption that just because it's in the boundaries, doesn't mean it's, we even are going to rezonate or anything. It could be just a part, Henry, I know you're, you know, I think you know what I'm talking about, it's just, this is the feel we have in this area, whatever it is, and some of it's due to existing church, blah, 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 we like those uses, we want to keep the convalescent, everything else, and that's good, but let's just include it because we get the feel of the whole street as we're going along, and we may want to do some improvements. Maybe at that point we don't need two lanes in each direction, maybe we go to one lane, we got a bike lane, we got whatever we want to do down there, a median, something like that, and so you make it nice and cohesive with the rest of the stretch, but the way the line is drawn now, it doesn't even include the street, notice.
Yeah, and thinking about something John said in the housing element discussion, or the, no, it was in the, I don't even know what you call it, the last two row and the last thing with this housing element thing, but you were talking about Arrow. I don't even know why we're not including the complex bottom right. You see that, it goes up like, poof, south of the tracks?
Yep.
Like, to me, thinking, yeah, right there, because to me, thinking about the discussion that we were having and then some of the points John brought up, if we're going to get to a place in space perhaps where there's opportunity on the south side of Arrow, I think we have to have the foresight to look at that and say, well, what do we know that's going to happen right around that area? And right now, as it stands, there may be parking for the Gold Line perhaps, there may be housing opportunities or mixed-use opportunities, so I would almost think we'd want continuity with that. And people, when I look at that, could walk to the sheriff's station, to Civic Center, they could walk to the Gold Line station, so I just don't know. My suggestion would be to drop that down, if you're going to include that, yeah, I would just take that down to Arrow and bring it across.
Absolutely.
I have just one question, and it's just to make it a little more, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at this, the map we have currently, and if I'm the folks at home, I got to be 100% confused. We have a clue where these boundaries are and the streets are, is there possibly that somewhere along the line, as we begin this process, that we could do a map that lists just the streets that tell us where these boundaries are? Because when we look here, you have a glob, okay? And I think we need it to be able to show people where Walnut is, where San Dimas Avenue is. I just think it's kind of confusing trying to look at a map like this.
No, definitely, understood. We'll make sure that all of the major streets are labeled.
Okay, thank you.
The map in our packet is almost impossible to read.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, if, just, I think it might make it convenient, more convenient, I know it'd make it convenient for me, but I'm sure it would make convenient for, I got a chance to study it, I got a chance to look at it, but when we're just showing it up on television, it's got to be confusing.
Understood.
I'll just mention that I am not opposed to dropping the southern portion that Ryan was talking about, I'm not opposed to including that industrial center there, and I think it makes a lot of sense to, on the east end there, also include the north side of Benita. It seems like there's potentially an upside to including the USDA property, so I would be okay with bringing that north of Benita to include that as well, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Eric, are you talking about going from the Circle K directly across and then squaring that off?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I can support that.
I think that's what Councilmember Ebner was mentioning, correct. So up to this line, that's that First Street, I believe? Up to that.
So it'd be just, the street just north of the Circle K?
Correct.
Back side of the property.
Yeah.
Not including the houses.
Yeah, it wouldn't go all the way to a street.
Not north, just south, first.
It wouldn't be a through street, so if you went east from the park, you'd be going down Dakota Court, crossing that where it has two homes, and then hitting Balboa Court all the way where it ends at the cul-de-sac, right to the west of the Avalon Apartments.
I wouldn't include that. I can't picture that.
So we would be looking then at a, if we take First Street east, just a direct shot, even though it runs right across the library property, you'd be going down just north of Circle K, and there's some streets and a couple of homes in there, but it would hit, still hit at the west side of Avalon.
Yeah, so Pony Express goes right up and it loops, so I guess that's what I was having a mental block on, is I just, there's a set of homes in there, so I mean, if for the purpose of the exercise, we're okay with this, then I'm not opposed to it, but I think pragmatically, when you think about this, I don't know that, we talk about piecemealing certain things, and I worry about that, that can we literally envision that something would be erected consistent with the use or something of downtown, dwarfing that little inlet of homes? I mean, I can't see that.
It's just to get a feel of the whole city, the north side.
Yeah.
Sorry, the north side, in my opinion, wouldn't change. I mean, that would be my, at least at this point, my thought, the north side of Benita wouldn't change, at least substantially. I mean, if the church wants to build a new church, there's something else that goes to the convalescent home property, I could see something like that, but I wouldn't actively be trying to jam more houses there or tear down the condos on that little loop of Pony Express at all. It's just to get the downtown, since it's a downtown specific plan, what's downtown like on that stretch of Benita, both, you know, just both sides, so you know, and you can see it and plan.
What's the issue, I'm just curious, what would be the issue with going two blocks north and south, or three blocks north and south of Benita, between, you know, Gaffney and the 57?
You mean, issues as we do the planning to include them?
Yeah, for the purposes of the exercise. I mean, if we're, if we're looking at it for the purposes of the analysis, and we were literally just going to look at what could be, not committing to anything, but saying, you know, is one block or two blocks, north and south of Benita, or even, probably just one block, I imagine, north, south of Benita, across east-west to include this space, you know, for the purposes of the exercise, is that something that makes sense? I mean, we've, it looks like we almost did that, and then we dropped down on Benita on the east side, right? But then we dipped up with SP 23, it looks like, on this as well. And so, I mean, I wonder about the inclusion of SP 23. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm wondering about the inclusion of SP 23 properties as it relates to this exercise.
If we're going to get into discussion of the SP 23 properties, then Councilmember Ebner has a.
Oh, no, I'm, well, whatever, we can talk about it later, but I mean, I'm just, or not.
I think we can speak generically about the whole thing.
Generically, why are we, why do we have like a stepladder going? I don't know that that's, I wouldn't consider that in my mind to be downtown per se.
So our thought process was to include SP 23 because it's a, be like a buffer or transition area, when you have the rail line bisecting, and we want to be able to provide for development standards and an understanding for the SP 23 sites, to make sure that we don't have four, five-story, we have development standards that will help blend into the existing historic town core area. And it jogs in and out because we purposely didn't want to include any, for the most part, any of these single-family existing residential homes.
So I just, speaking generally, appreciate that, and I think there's no dispute that those properties and ones like it will complement downtown, I think, quite a bit, but I'm not certain that, for the purposes of this exercise, that if we, if we did not include them, we still could set specific development standards for that, couldn't we not?
Correct, it would just be a separate process, so obviously you've got the downtown specific plan process, we're going to go through all the rezoning, the general plan amendment processes, and all the environmental, so if we take out SP 23, then you just have to do that process specifically for that area.
I just wonder if we, if we're creeping away from the, that downtown specific area that I could almost see just taking that line along the tracks, or have it swooped down to pick up there just north of Benita. But I don't know. I'm just throwing spaghetti on the wall, I don't know who else is listening.
No, listening a lot because I agree. Not because I agree, I listen a lot, I listen a lot, even when I disagree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, no, I've been listening, and yes, I thought the tracks might be a good dividing line, but I'll speak just for the two properties that I can talk about, the other one, talk about as you.
It may turn out that all those properties north of the rail line in the analysis are considered in the totality in terms of, is there anything we need to do north of the line that, to avoid detracting from the downtown core? And it may just be that it's more like an influence zone to the downtown, and that we're really looking at is, we should be developing some specific restrictions to avoid them from turning into a detractor, rather than, do we rezonate and completely transform those properties like you potentially could be doing along the Benita corridor? The real, when I look, I look at the map and I worry that, you know, we're big and then we're coming small, and you know, what's the real goal? I mean, if this is a 30, 40, 50-year planning process, we have to be thinking not what is there, or what we potentially could see be there, or could be impacting of what we really care to see there in the core. And so bigger is most likely better, because you can always retract it back if it's too small, and we go through the entire planning process, then we're going to be picking off other areas you're going to need to take a look at later, because we may realize they may detract if we don't speak to it in some fashion.
So can we start the analysis and say in January, February, March, say, okay, these particular areas just don't seem to be part of the analysis?
Real quick, before Nick comes up, if the council did wish, and now we've discussed this as part of the housing element, part of the downtown specific plan, you can have an overlay area. If we wanted an overlay area just for the SP 23, that kind of provided specific discussion and standards just for that area, we can still do that within the downtown specific plan as an overlay, if that's the concern of council.
I just, I just think that, you know, earmuffs, John. I just think that the community generally had some passionate thoughts about this area, and I just think that, to me, as I look at that, I, you know, my thought would be to draw that line straight along the tracks and pick it up right at the base there, whatever that is, at Cataract 1 North, and then take it across. And I, you know, but to that end, though, I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily completely opposed to leaving that packing house property there, but cutting out the two northern ones, just because of the intersection with Benita-Cataract, and there may be some utility there or something, because it is, it's visible from Benita-Cataract, so.
Just to set the guidelines here, if we're going to be talking about, if we're going to have a discussion about the two westernmost ones, then John can participate in that, but if we're going to talk about the packing house, then that's the one parcel that John, Councilmember Ebner has a conflict on, he'd need to leave.
Well, I guess I just wonder, John, your thoughts on the two most northwestern properties?
Yeah, I, you think about the kind of barrier there is now, it's railroad track. Now there's going to be three tracks and a giant wall going to Euclid, which is, it comes down right where the middle one of those triangular properties is, and in practical terms, and I'll just say this, it's sort of a, I don't know what you want to say, it's, it might be wise not to include those two properties, because some of you have been here for some of the discussions and controversies, some of you haven't, but going back many, many years, touching those two properties in any way stirs up a lot of, shall I call it, involvement? And in order to proceed in a more harmonious way, I think it would be wise to not have those, that way I think the rest of the plan would not be in danger, to put it honestly.
Emmett, we're just talking about the.
I'll take a little break.
Okay, yeah, I can make some comments really quick. So Cliff Notes version, we're talking about the two northwest specifically, I can say SP 23 now and talk about it, right? Okay, so bottom line is, we're talking about the three SP 23 properties, and so looking at that from the lens of both it being off of Benita, kind of tucked into the residential area, I'm just not sure that including it for the purposes of the downtown specific plan, to me, makes a lot of sense. John was commenting as well, essentially stating that he also agrees that the two northwest properties, the first two, don't make a lot of sense to him, he just can't talk about the packing house. So my thought would be to take the line from the two northwest properties, run it directly across the tracks, and then intersect right there with the packing house, because that's visible off of Benita, and then draw that line across and continue.
No, I agree, I got that one before I left.
Okay.
That makes sense. I still even have some problems with Far West Point going past the Red Robin, or Red Roof.
Red Roof.
Stuff like that. To me, I don't picture, to me, as being the part of the downtown core.
Well, let's let John, Councilmember Ebner, come back in for that discussion, but to complete the discussion about SP 23 that John has to be out of the room on.
Just because a piece of property is within the boundaries of whatever we draw, it doesn't mean that the consultant's going to come up at the end and say, hey, you want to do something here, maybe he or she may say, well, this isn't practical, and I think you want to leave this the way it is. So it doesn't hurt to have, you know, larger areas.
In my opinion, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't. It would be helpful, though, I mean, you talked about maybe two, three months, we look at, maybe taking part of the specific plan boundary and changing it. I would like not to do, to go too far, probably more than another few weeks, because we're doing our analyses now on the specific plan area, we're looking at land uses, we're actually calculating out how much square footage, how much, how many buildings are in the area, because when we do the environmental analyses, we're going to need all that information and calculate, build out, that will occur over the next 10, 15 years. So it would be good if we can just try, I know we're talking about tonight, but if we could kind of, you're giving great input, this is what I was hoping for tonight, is that we get through this and kind of talk about these areas, but, you know, that site up there in the northwestern corner, that is a site you identified for new housing, so it is, you know, just next to, you know, it does lend itself because it's such a.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah.
So Councilmember Ebner has a right to be in the room if we're going to talk about that up there.
Sure.
Just need to get to the final decision on the SP 23. So do three council members agree that the line should be drawn down the railroad tracks until they intersect with that horizontal line on the top of the packing house property?
I'll agree with that.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Yeah, that's fine with me.
It looks like, at least three of the council members agree.
Can we draw where the line would come across?
So, it comes on the northern part of the tracks, then it jogs up.
So, jog up right there, just to the west, at the western boundary of the packing house?
Do you wanna take that out?
They said the, I heard they include packing house, no?
Right. So, what it is, Dennis, is we're saying that we're gonna take out the northwest two properties. Those two right there, the line will follow the train tracks, and then it'll just pop up there to include the packing house, which is visible off of Benita.
So, do we have three council members that agree with that?
I think it should be included myself, so I'm not one of the three.
Okay.
We have one, Councilmember V M.
I'm fine with those changes.
Okay, the mayor is also, so that's a 3-1, with Councilmember Ebner recusing himself. Okay, so that decision has been made.
Okay.
And Councilmember Ebert.
Can John comment on the new boundaries?
So, I would recuse myself on the packing house property, but not on the other two. I vote in favor of taking those out, so that would be a... And Dennis, did you say you didn't want to take out those?
No, I don't think it hurts to leave things in. I see no problem with that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Let the consultant make some improvements or opinions, and come back to the council and say, this is what I think you should do, this is what I think you shouldn't do. I think you should have put this in, I think you should have taken this out. I don't think that hurts. I don't think we have to make all those, the boundary complete decisions tonight. But I mean, it's fine. It's no big deal. I think, as Ryan said, the most important part is that downtown section. That's what people are gonna be looking at.
Yeah.
All right.
So, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but you can continue with the discussion about the northwesternmost point now.
And this was probably Henry and staff, you know, looking at that several months ago with the housing element, looking at that property, the northwestern property for, as a redevelopment site for housing or mixed-use development. It does lend itself just to location and how it's next to the other properties that are off of Benita. I think that was the thinking, right, Henry? Yeah.
All right, I'm a little confused about where you're talking about now.
Is that northeast or northwest?
Northwest.
The northwest.
Right there.
Yeah, that, to me, just seems strange, as we're talking about the downtown, you know, downtown corridor.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden, you know, when you're there.
To me, like, it's kind of hanging out there away from the downtown area. I mean, that's where the Lowes and the Red Roof Inn is. I guess that's a way to deal with the Red Roof Inn, but the reality is, it just seems like it shouldn't be a part of the downtown general plan. But that's just an opinion.
So, I just wanna make the, kind of remind the public and council that the downtown isn't just commercial and mixed-use. This did include some high-density residential, which is what we were proposing, higher-density residential in this particular corner. So, it's kind of just planning for and how it interrelates with one another, making sure that there's connections and that...
All right, I understand. All right, anybody else have any questions?
So, just to go over, we will redraw the boundary to exclude the two western SP 23. We will include the packing house site. And then on the southeast corner, we will include this triangle, and then go north along First Street to include these varying uses that front onto Benita.
I actually don't think we had a council decision on that easternmost part, but is there, three council members agree with what Henry just described?
I agree.
I do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other question? So, that concludes our presentation, but we can answer any other questions that the council may have.
All right, did you get what you needed for tonight?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I did have a couple of questions just about the other part, the rest of the presentation. So, is that okay to talk about that right now? It's about the community involvement and all that.
Yeah, I agree with that, but let's narrow it down to about 10 minutes for we can actually start the meeting pretty close to on time tonight.
That'd be great, 'cause I can use some food. But, Sophie.
First of all, I like this PowerPoint. I like the, for one thing, the selection of photos, because I think the photos that were shown, I know some of them weren't in San Dimas, but it kind of gave an indication of the sensibilities, I believe, of staff and the consultant, and so, or whoever did them. And I think that's a good start. I think it's really boding well. As Henry said, this is really exciting. We've tried to do this before. We tried for a long time, and I think we're kind of starting all over. I mean, there's obviously some things we're gonna be saying.
The only, and the questions I had was, one, two questions, basically. One is, are you going to be doing interviews with city council members? Like individual city council members? On Vision and all that kind of stuff? As part of your, part of your...
In what aspect, I guess?
We're having the community meetings, we're having an advisory committee. Are you going to, besides public meetings, are you going to be meeting with council members individually to get their thoughts on anything?
I would have some concerns about the Brown Act. If we're gonna have council members be giving individual input, and then the consultants making decisions based on that. If there's gonna be input from the council members that should come at a public city council meeting. So, we could have input from council members. It would just need to be at a agendized city council meeting.
And that's fine with that current advice. In years past, Dennis probably remembers, I'm not sure who we did it with, Emmett, but same Brown Act, and consultants did have interviews with individual council members to get sort of a baseline of what are the community needs for this or that. Not necessarily downtown, but just different kinds of things. So, I'm just pointing that out, that I guess then we'll expect you to be back here often. The second, go ahead. No, good.
That was the plan. As Chris mentioned, we will be coming during key milestones.
Okay, good. And then there's, we talked about a public advisory committee and some public outreach meetings. And I didn't see, I saw public outreach starting in January, like some community meetings, that kind of thing. Are we doing that before we pick members of the advisory committee? And the reason I say that is because the public doesn't know much about it right now. And I would like to somehow generate some buzz, like I know Henry wants to do, before we limit the people who are gonna be on that advisory committee.
Yeah, and I, we have different groups and different ways that we are gonna be reaching out, but it's kind of be similar, we will reach out with our social media and such. This is a tentative schedule, so we kind of just are anticipating, but it doesn't mean that we will start these community workshop meetings without picking our community advisory group. So, like we did kind of with the Housing Element Subcommittee, I think it was about a month or so that we reached out to the public and tried to get them interested. And then hopefully, we get a number of different individuals from different stakeholders to provide input and be part of this group.
I'm good, I see.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned, because, number one, we want people, every single member of that body. It's not a body that will be learning. They will learn, of course, too. But I don't want them to just be a learning body that hears from consultant and the staff about what we're doing and that kind of thing. Every single member needs to be a person who wants to participate in a two-way dialogue. And I wanna know how that's gonna happen, or I'm wondering how it's gonna happen. I mean, one way would be for council members to each get a selection or two to put on the committee. But I'm not saying that's the only way, but that's the bedrock of participation, is to get people who are gonna actually talk to staff and challenge things. And that's what I'm finding in some committees is not happening.
Well, I just wanna echo what John said. I agree, there's gotta be people that are dedicated to this program. I realize that we had a lot of things going on, but when the Housing Element Subcommittee was formed, the council had no input to it, and we didn't really find out who really was on it until we came near the end. The new Quality of Life Commission Committee, okay? Council didn't have any kind of bearing on that, and I understand the reasons why, at least on the quality of life deal. But as far as the housing element, it would have been nice to know, you know, what was going on and more and more details as it progressed. And I would worry that, echo John's concern about not knowing what's going on or who's on this select committee, because quite honestly, this is huge for this community for the next 40 years. So, and I know that, I've only been on the council for 14 years, but when I was on the Planning Commission, for 10 years before that, 15 years before that, we talked about the general plan for all of those years, and we never got to it. So, now we're getting to it, and it's pretty neat. We went through charrettes and all kinds of stuff. So, I have some, I'd like to really know how that process is gonna work and how these people are gonna be selected, and what, you know, how that's, in time, obviously.
And I can attest to the General Plan Advisory Committee, and this is going way back in the late 80s, but that group of people was so intensely involved in the process, and we had so many meetings, and planning, to their credit, elicited just all this input. And the general plan that we have today is a result of all of that back and forth. And a lot of, it wasn't staff saying, here's what we're doing, or here's the best ideas. It was, that was that, too, but it was the committee members. And I just remember, I can name a bunch of the members who were on that committee, that had so much to say, and like Emmett said, this is big, and so, we want people who are gonna have so much to say about it.
Super. Any other questions? And if so, we're gonna wrap this up in about two or three minutes, so. Anybody? All right, staff? Henry, you got any?
Yeah, I got the information.
You got everything you need? Thank you very much for helping us out with this. I realize the money's gonna come, but the reality is, we appreciate you giving us your time and your expertise.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. We're gonna take a, we're gonna call this study session for like 15 minutes, so we can start the meeting on time. 7 o'clock, everybody be back in here about 1:00, 2:00, after John cleans up his stuff. Okay?